Always excited to hear that. And just real quickly, some of y'all may have heard that Morelli Corporate has filed for reorganization bankruptcy, but they're going just as normal in Lewisburg, Morelli. It has not affected us here. They're hiring here. I think that was all I really wanted to mention, and a couple of RFIs down here, y'all can read for yourselves. And that was it unless you have any questions.
Yeah, I do. Hawk converting building.
Yep.
That's on Industrial Drive, right?
Yep.
So the Hawk converting is nearing a lease, probably?
Yeah, they are. I talked to their, I actually was gonna put them in for an RFI, talked to the agent that Hale uses for those, and he said that they are, they are close to signing a lease. He did not allow as to whom that was with.
No, no, we don't, we don't need no of that.
No, that, yeah.
And then the next building down there you're referring to, that's the last one on Industrial Drive?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
The smaller building, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Well, I was gonna ask Mr. Hutto, when they file for bankruptcy, reorganization, do we lose the property taxes?
No, those are still, have to be paid. You know, it may give them more time to pay them, or they may get paid on payments other than a lump sum, but the, you know, large reorganization like this is more about changing their corporate structure and moving debt from probably, you know, inside the US to outside the US, or vice versa, than it is their operations here. And the, honestly, the taxes are probably the smallest part of something they might owe.
But, well, that's good news that we're not gonna lose those taxes.
Yeah, Chapter 11 is a reorganization where they can come out of bankruptcy, other than like other things that they don't plan on doing.
Additional questions for Jennifer?
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. And who am I, let me see. Oh, Brandon, Mr. Shepherd for Public Works.
Yes, sir. Done with this panel?
Well, that was easy. Who have I left out? Anybody?
Mr. Owen.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, Alan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just a couple of items to update you all on with the adoption of the recent budget. We've been working on getting the packet together to send to the State Comptroller's Office. We were lacking the budgets for the electric, gas, and water. We've got all of those now as of a couple of days ago, so we hope and plan on sending the packet to, with a completed budget and everything attached to the Comptroller's Office within the next couple of days, and I'll be sure to send to all of you a copy of that final document that we sent to the state. Other than that, it's audit time. You know, we close one year and do, finish a budget, and now let's turn our attention to the audit of the books for last year. And Debbie and I met with our auditor, Ms. Wickburg, last week, I think, so we met with her, go over the schedule, things that she needs. She's already provided a list of some of the things that she needs, and I think she's coming in maybe two weeks from now?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third, something like that. So we're moving forward with closing out the year end, and unless you have any questions, that's all that I can think of right now.
You mentioned Debbie. She's our main grant person, correct?
Correct, yes.
So I think every department kinda depends on her to help them through the hoops necessary to receive the grants.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we depend a lot on grants here in the city, so.
Well, that license plate reader was a great, well, that was fatuitous when, that was in place for this terrible event. Questions for Alan?
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate what you do, Alan. If I have left off anybody else?
No, sir.
All right, other business.
I have a letter I'd like to read. Very, very seldom, well, no, you know, most of our communication is to the negative point, and we got a positive communication I'd like to share. It was addressed to Mr. Baum and Ms. Vicki. It states, "I wanted to express my thanks to the city staff for working so hard to pick up tree debris. Several rounds of storms have made a sizable mess around our town with so much down branches and trees, and I know the staff is working hard to catch up. We are constantly hit with storms here. I watched nearly all of it from Arizona, Texas, Nebraska, Smokies, and South Carolina these past few months and missed almost all of it, only to return home almost each time having to clean up. Please let them know I sincerely appreciate the work they do. They do it well, in my opinion. My yard never gets torn up when they pick up the debris, and that impresses me as much as the staff making those timely pickups. Keep up the good work. We're trying to keep the city neat and clean. God bless you for the work you two are doing for us, and I sincerely appreciate it." So I wanted to share that.
David Johnson. David Johnson.
Any other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
Motion. Second by Councilwoman Crutcher, second by Councilwoman Thomas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Lose the poll, say no. Stand adjourned, thank you.
Hey, who put these things, who got to work on these, man? They may have.
... principles, and that amount is, without the 3%, would be about $17,900, okay? If we made the raise effective June 30th, for that one day, would add $600 roughly to that $17,900, which would make it about $18,500. That's being accrued last year. With respect to budget amendment, when we worked on our budget amendments that you all recently approved, we projected this to occur, this, actually, we projected a 3% effective June 30th, so that the amended budget reflects what's, what's being contemplated tonight. So I just wanna make that clear, the action that's before you tonight, the only additional cost over what we normally done is $600.
Well, if we, I mean, if we already approved it, and it was in the June of 30th, then why we even bringing it up tonight?
Because the issue is that because of the way the calendar falls, June, the first pay period in July starts on June 30th, one day. So, and I think I, and I know I mentioned last time, the payroll system doesn't have the ability to have two rates in one pay period, so if we don't do anything, if I understand your amended motion to wait until July 1st, that means we can't really do anything until the next pay period after the pay period that starts June 30th, which means that paychecks won't be reflected until Ju, July, the check that comes out on July 31st.
Okay, one last question.
Yeah.
If we look at the financial statement, once it's done for June 30th, and then I ask you for balance of funds on July 1 or July?
Yes.
10th, the only difference is gonna be $600?
Would be $600. Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Well, then, may I, if that's all, I thought it was 18, I missed something.
No, and I apologize, because in my email to Gina to put the item on the agenda, I was really not very clear, and that's on me, my fault, so.
Well, I withdraw my motion to amend if whoever seconded it will, who seconded it?
I did, I'll withdraw.
And then I'll make a new motion to approve it.
Is that the proper way to do it, Mr. Hutto? Verbally withdraw, or?
That is fine, you can withdraw a motion.
Okay. All right, you have a motion and a second?
A motion, is it?
I'll second.
Second.
Oh, I thought Linda seconded it.
Well, she can. She did last time, she did this time.
I'm sorry.
You can go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
So Councilman Burns makes the motion.
Effective June 30th.
And seconds that motion. Okay, we're good on that? Okay, further discussion? Or discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Gina?
Item 6C, consider approval of first reading of ordinance 25-09, or ordinance by owner requests to rezone property located at 650 Spring Place Road, map 071B, Group C, parcel 026.00, within the corporate city limits of the city of Lewisburg, from I-1 Light Industrial to C-2 Immediate Business. Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation by vote 5 to 0. Owner Edward Tankersley, Lynn Tankersley, and Stephen Bradley Houghton.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to break.
Motion by Councilman Burns, second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Michael seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 6D, consider approval of first reading of Annexation Resolution 25-10, an annexation resolution requested by Marshall County Highway Department to annex a proportion of Globe Road into the corporate city limits of Lewisburg, Tennessee. Approximately .75 miles of Globe Road described as from north starting point of where the current city limits ends going south .75 miles to the end of unaddressed Globe Road, map 069, parcel 055.00. The Planning Commission gave an unfavorable recommendation, 0 to 5 vote. Owner, Marshall County Highway Department, Marshall County Government.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Item carries for lack of a motion, does not carry, and that would affect the next item. That is correct, is it not, Mr. Hutto?
I think we ought to have a motion to deny the annexation rather than have it failed for lack of motion, 'cause that would, 'cause you have to take action on an annexation. You can either deny it or approve it, and if you have a motion to deny it, everyone votes against, or votes for a motion to deny than that, but.
Okay, do we have a motion to deny?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Crutcher seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Is this the same as voting no?
You're voting to deny.
You're voting to deny.
Okay, I'm, I'm, okay.
Okay. Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, the next item addresses the plan of services. Do we have to vote to deny that as well, or?
I would, just to be consistent.
Do we have such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Item 6E, consider approval of Resolution 25-15, a resolution to approve Marshall County Highway Department request, a plan of service for annexation on Globe Road, approximately .75 miles, approximately .75 miles of Globe Road described as from the north starting point of where the current city limits ends going south .75 miles to the end of unaddressed Globe Road, map 069, parcel 055.00. Owner, Marshall County Highway Department slash Marshall County Government.
Now, do I have that motion?
A motion to deny?
Yes.
Yeah, submit the motion to deny, make it a motion to deny.
A motion to deny.
Second it.
Councilman Crutcher and Councilwoman Michael. Is there discussion? This is to deny. Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 6F, consider approval of first reading of ordinance 25-11, or ordinance adopting of International Property Maintenance Code, which will replace Chapter 13 of the municipal code in its entirety.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilman Robinson, second, but Councilwoman Thomas. Mr. Hutto, do you have any comments before we, well, during discussion? Do you have any comments you would like to make?
I don't, I'm not, I guess in particular, I've, there are certain things that we have to have in our published version on the website of the ordinance, and that's why some of the notice provisions are added in here as to how we notify residents, and what this should do is, it gives the city the administrative ability to assess fines as needed, to essentially ticket people where they don't have to go to court, they can fix the problem, hopefully. They can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals if they don't like the decision, and so court's now a third option way down the road, you know, after some fines, things have been assessed. And it also, you know, these international codes are fairly standard and reasonable, and as long as they're modified for a local jurisdiction, they're pretty clear. I think Mr. Rush was talking with me a little bit about there's, may amend this slightly before the second reading to allow administrative fees that would be more than just simply the $50 a day for some, some specific violation, so there might be a fifth section that says, you know, schedule of fees for the following things is attached.
Kinda like court costs to analogy?
Someone.
Similar. So you had time to thoroughly review it. Additional discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Chris. Okay, on page 11?
On the International Property Maintenance Code?
Please, uh-huh.
Yes, ma'am.
On the right-hand side, that starts with a fine failure of the owner or agent having charge. Okay, go to the, all right, if you read that complete sentence, "They shall be subject to prosecution in accordance with Section 10 106.3, as prescribed by the authority having jurisdiction." Is that where we're gonna insert B here on this document, ordinance number 2511, where it talks about the $500?
Are you referring to 302.4 on weeds there, or which one are you referring to on page?
302.4, yes, sir. But I was looking.
No, we would have to come up with a different one. Basically, I already talked with Hutto about that, it just lays out in more defined, so we're gonna come back later on and define it, you know, on fees as well, it'd be more than $50.
Okay, so we're gonna adopt it and then amend it?
Yeah, we're gonna amend it, fit it as well. We, we have to do it as well for stop work orders on page, hold on one second, page 7 as well. We're gonna have to amend that as well, we're gonna come up with a fine for the violation of stop work orders.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to amend that as well.
Okay, but you have page 11 earmarked for that.
Yes, we, we have it marked and everything.
Okay.
If you look back at page, page, Roman numeral 6 on adoption, it has the sections that we need to update in here, on Roman numeral 6.
On adoptions, is that the beginning or the end?
At the ve, very beginning.
Okay.
Okay, does this cover the repeat offenders?
Uh, repeat, that's a good question.
The habitual repeat offenders.
Um, I would have to, I do not believe so, I would have to reread it again to make sure, I do not believe this covers repeat offenders, but I think that is something we can add to on violators on the municipality code.
Yeah, the, the repeat offenders was a separate item, that we were either gonna maybe make that a adjustment to our code or replace it with this, but we can add in the repeat offenders and, you know, a $50 a day fine, you know, that gets expensive pretty quickly even for uncut grass, especially if you then have the, you know, cost of the city cutting the grass for somebody.
You don't know what.
So it, it's not just that, oh, you haven't cut your grass, you get charged $50, you have, if you don't cut your grass, and you're ticketed, and then it's not cut after 10 days, on that 10th day, you get another $50 fine, and it keeps going from there till the grass is cut.
Mm-hmm.
So some of the fines, you know, that, that can add up very quickly, and there's also, you know, the, a limit to what municipalities can charge as a, as a fine, and the courts make some distinction between, you know, administrative fees and things like that and fines, except, you know, penalty, we're limited to $50, administrative costs are, have more leeway.
But what we have talked about before is habitual, so you're saying that we can address that in the amendment that we're making?
Yes, there'll be probably two line items, or three, you know, two or three sections will say, you know, the one, there'll be the repeat offenders.
Someone with a fine on three area codes sent a long message.
And any, anything else that we discuss over the next month, and we could, we could also defer this vote if you wanted to for the first reading until we have that in there as well, that's also an option.
Mayor, we, Chris, are we in a big rush to get this done?
Uh, no, sir, we're not in any kind of rush. If you guys want us to go ahead and do that, we can go ahead and do that, it's up to y'all. We're more than open to do anything the City Council wants there. Be happy to go ahead and get that organized first, then we can defer the item until we get it all completed. So we can do that, it's up to the City Council.
I'd like to defer it till we get, till it be like we want it.
How long would it take for you to make the changes that we need?
I will.
Continue to have it by the next council meeting?
Uh, no.
Or September the latest, could you have it by September?
Two months, yeah. We could do that.
'Cause that's a lot of, a lot of changes, you'll have to look through everything and at.
It's gonna take some coordination between me and Hutto as well.
Fit this to the city of Lewisburg.
Just defer it till the document is ready.
Till, yeah.
We don't have a motion.
Well, I like deadlines.
So I can do it, is there a motion on the floor?
Make the motion.
So we have a motion on the floor, correct? Read back, Gina, the motion.
The motion was the original, Mr. Robinson's first and Councilman Thomas seconding. Now, it's open, now they can amend, right? I mean, or defer, sorry.
Someone can make a motion to defer to the August or September meeting.
That overrides this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the first reading with amendments at the September council meeting, have it presented at the September work session.
Does that need your word defer in it, or is that sufficient?
Let's, you know, let's have just motion to defer it till September.
Okay.
I'll have, I'd like to make a motion to defer this International Property Maintenance
Code until our September work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you.
Number seven is city manager's report.
All right, we don't have much today. When you walked up, you probably saw a red, white, and blue box sitting out on the front porch. It's called a flag retirement box. Mr. Garrison Lewis had to do an Eagle Scout project when he turned 18, and that was his project, to make a flag retirement box. So now, if you got a flag that's tattered and torn with all this good weather we're having, this is a place you can return that flag. When it gets full, they come and pick them up and dispose of them properly. He also has one at the public library. I don't know if it's just two of them, but I know that's where he's got.
There's one at the rec center.
There's one at the rec center. I'm gonna try to do three, but I don't know, I don't know. I know we got two of them, but I thought it was a pretty good idea. Freedom Fest 2025 was a huge success. If you were down there and saw all of that, quite a crowd of people, a lot of opportunity for vendors and things for the kids to do and whatnot, and a pretty good message we got. Biggest one we've had yet, they keep getting bigger each year. Everything went pretty well, not too many hiccups, I don't think, was it, Chief?
Not too bad. I think the traffic getting out was, was, was probably more vehicles that got into the venue than what we thought before we locked up, but it did work.
Yeah, because they kinda trickled in at different times, but everybody left at the same time, so, yeah, I watched traffic on Second Avenue, it was a backup like I'd never seen. Also, this year, we had nine fireworks stands. That probably wasn't too much fun for the police department either, 'cause I noticed they got a lot of calls, people shooting outside the prescribed time we had them, but I thought that was pretty interesting to have nine fireworks stand. And that's all I got.
I wanna make a comment on that. A few years ago, we changed the fee from, I think it was $55, to now it's how much?
It's $750, and.
Times nine is how much?
About $650.
Nine times $750, about $6,900, somewhere in that range?
Seven thousand dollar range, somewhere around that.
Whereas, what it, way it was before, we received a little over $300 for the same, same amount.
And I had.
So that was a huge increase, that we first thought it was going to scare away all vendors.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the first year it did affect it, but since then, it's coming back stronger than ever.
Yeah, Chris and I had a discussion about the fees, we were kinda thinking that maybe a lot of places that do something like that, if you're an out-of-town vendor, you pay a little bit more than your local folks, and that makes sense to me, so we may be coming up with something to see about adjusting those prices where the out-of-town folks that come in and set up would pay a little bit more. I don't think that's gonna turn anybody back.
No, it's been a success as far as raising revenue. Further questions for Bam? Chief Scott Braden?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and thank you again for the recognition of the officers in the department tonight, that was greatly appreciated, we all, I speak on behalf of the entire department when I say thank you, that means a lot to them and me as well.
Well deserved.
Thank you. June, so for the month of June, the department, we took in 12, or 1,212 calls for service, or service calls, however you like to put it. There were 32 new cases assigned to the Investigation Division. Most recently, Sergeant Schram with the department is the newest and the second certified pilot for our drone program, the UAS, so we now have a second remote pilot certification with him, so it, it took him a while, I'm glad I haven't, wasn't the one having to take that test and put in the, the work to study for it, but, so that, that was a goal, and Debbie stayed on me pretty good, and we were able to make Schram, Sergeant Schram, get it, get it done, so we have a second pilot as well in the department. Austin Pollock is our newest officer, he graduated the Academy Basic Training, June the 20th, and then we had a, another young lady, Ally Wood, that just left for the Academy this past Sunday. So we had one just come out, and we had one that is going, and then we've got four that are in training, so that's, that's where we're at currently, so that's all I've got, Mayor. Unless you've got anything for me?
We mentioned that we rarely have murders inside the city, what, once, how many, how long ago was another murder committed within corporate bounds?
2023, I believe, if you look at it, it's, they tend to average about one a year, maybe every other year, so it's not often, that's not something we deal with often, which is a great thing.
Well, we appreciate those who protect us. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
What, who are your staff up to now?
So currently, we are at 30, and we are, we're trying to get to 34, so that's, that's the goal, that's what we're approved for currently, but we're at 29 or 30, trying to move toward 34, and we've got, now that we're in July, we've got some applicants we are going to interview and see what we can do with it.
Other question?
That's my question.
Further questions?
Thinking that.
Thank you, Mayor.
But Chief, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
The other chief, Hawkins?
Deputy Chief Dalton.
Huh? Oh, Drew's gone.
Deputy Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Deputy Chief.
Chief Hawkins is out of town.
Okay.
I am Deputy Chief Stephen Dalton.
All right. See, I couldn't think of Linda's name, and then now I'm introducing the wrong person, so.
That's all right, that's all right.
We'll, we'll keep going.
For June, we had a total of 121 calls of service, 46 for fire, 75 medical, did 838 hours of training and 51 inspections, and firefighter Hayden Mays, I like to recognize And firefighter Hayden Mays, I like to recognize him, he just recently went and got his EMR. So we're back up to fully medical, full medical qualifications with that.
Questions for? Mr. Dalton?
Your new trucking, it is, it is up and running?
Yes, sir, our new medical unit, Squad One, it is running. You probably heard it around town, it makes a different sound than all the rest of them. It is loud.
It was outside last week, wasn't it?
Yes, but I think Mr. Robertson was on vacation. He, uh, he may have missed that.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can't hear.
Yes. Yes.
Kent?
I have nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, Carrie?
So everybody has their little newsletter that kind of tells everything that's going on for the most part. Just some numbers from this past year, fiscal year ending 2025. We had one thousand seven hundred fifty-two pickleball players, or visits. We had, and then one thousand two hundred and twenty-two water aerobic visits. We had seven thousand three hundred and twenty-six cart rentals for the golf course. We had almost three thousand visitors to the fitness room. That's in addition to memberships. We had seven thousand sixty-seven visits, rounds of golf. That is eight, nine holes and eighteen holes combined. That does not include the season ticket holders either. Ninety-five season ticket holders for the golf course. We've got, we had six thousand five hundred and fifty-three folks who visited the gymnasium. Usually that's for basketball. We rented the large meeting room one hundred and one times, or days. We have five hundred and forty-seven memberships. That is including corporate memberships, annual memberships, or the à la carte, whether it's just pool or fitness room, et cetera. A hundred and fifty-five visits to the racquetball courts. Our small meeting room rented a hundred and sixty-seven days. And we had eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-two visitors to the swimming pools, both indoor and outdoor. We had nine hundred and thirty-eight visitors on the walking track. And just a little fun thought, we sold four thousand five hundred and thirty slices of pizza. So those were just the numbers for our fiscal year 2025. If you have any questions, let me know. But the Fourth of July tournament went great. We are going to be keeping that for the rec center to build on and to bring in extra revenue. And we are also starting talks for the Taste of Lewisburg, which is going to be a fundraiser this November for Parks and Recreation as well, so.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Our new budget included to buy more carts. Is that true or false?
I don't think so.
We talked about it.
We talked about it, but I don't think it was ever added.
Well, it was a moneymaker's reason why I'm asking about that. Further questions?
When's the tennis court going to be researched?
They will, I'll find out. No, I'm glad, glad you mentioned that. I will find out July fourteenth if we got the Project Diabetes Grant, which includes new tennis courts and pickleball courts. So after that, after we find out that, then I will move forward. I'm sorry.
You haven't heard from that?
Yet to bid it?
Actually, no, I don't, I won't have to bid it. I can bid it, but the quote that I got is on a government contract, and so it's something that we would not have to put out for bid.
Okay, Clay, more questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chris?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple, a couple things to go over. On July the fifteenth, our planning commission at three o'clock will have a work session, and it will cover the planned unit development. We're going to talk about where current planned unit development is, and we're going to probably do some what we need to update in there. So we're going to have a discussion over that. And for our planning commission agenda for Tuesday, at four o'clock, we're going to have a couple items on there, is annexation of one mile of Finley Beach and one mile of Robin Hood Road. Adam was deferred because we're seeking a legal opinion. And we're going to have a rezoning of Old Farmington Road from C two to R two, and we're going to have a final plat for Chittamas State Phase Three. And that's going to be thirty homes and everything like that. Y'all will receive a staff report on Friday. Usually I have reports on our violations and everything. I will get that to you tomorrow. It just slipped my mind today. Does anybody have any questions?
Chittamas State's where is, is that Finley Beach?
Yes, ma'am, it is. It's Finley Beach.
It's on the right side going out.
Correct, yes.
Further questions? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Is Michael here?
No.
No, I don't want to make Jennifer last.
She's here.
Jennifer? I have overlooked her before, so I don't want to again.
Are you calling on?
Yes, please. Our economic.
All right, y'all, I gave y'all a printed report, so I'm not going to go over this in detail unless y'all have questions. But a couple of things I wanted to draw your attention to. With the existing industry, a couple of expansions that are happening, Radiation Protection Products, which is up in Chapel Hill, they're looking to expand either in their Chapel Hill location or moving their business to Lewisburg to Spring Place Road. They haven't decided yet. They're leaning toward Chapel Hill, but there, there's no final decision there yet. Meth is expanding. A few of us went out there for their employee recognition for quality. They've talked about doing an expansion that'll happen in 2027. They've got new contracts, both with Ford and Honda, Kia, so they're going great guns out at Meth, and we're.
It is six o'clock, time for our regular council meeting. We want to welcome here. I do want to mention one thing before we, uh, Reverend Johnson, to lead us in prayer. I want us to remember, I want us to remember that tragedy in Texas and all those young people who, and adults who, who passed away.
Okay.
Extremely.
Is this Walker Eliza family?
Re-reading standard?
Okay. Okay.
Following this, we've asked those police department personnel as a group to lead us in the pledge.
Okay.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our heaven and father, we are grateful for this day. We're grateful for the many blessings that you allow us to experience. We ask, Father, that you be in this meeting tonight. We ask that your spirit control and give wisdom and direction and guidance. We ask for the Leon Finley family. We ask, heavenly Father, for Walker Eliza family. And God, remember those lives that was lost in the flood. And we pray, God, that you give them peace and comfort, because you are the Father of comfort. We ask that you also give them strength and faith to reveal. God, you are a good and great God. In Jesus' name, we ask these things, and everyone say it.
Amen. Thank you. Scott, would you bring your?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if the police would come back up, we're going to bid you off our.
We're, how many do we have?
We got some over here?
My word!
It's not all of them, Mayor, but this is the majority of them that were involved.
Let's try all together over here. As we all know, how many weeks has it been? There was a great evil visit upon this city, taking an innocent life. While we brie for the family, we brie for the whole city. It was unusual to have a murder, a sicko, a dentist murder. For what I am so appreciative of, and I think everyone should be appreciative of, we caught the, this police department, because our honor was quick and professional, caught this guy before he could kill somebody else. And I think that is worthy of praise in itself. And we're going to present a plaque, Linda's, where we.
The City of Lewisburg Administration extends its heartfelt gratitude to our dedicated Lewisburg Police Department for their diligent service and swift response in apprehending a suspect involved in a famous crime that left our community in shock and sorrow. Your commitment to justice and to protecting the citizens of our city is deeply appreciated. We recognize that each and every day, our police officers work tirelessly to keep our neighborhoods as safe as possible, often in the most difficult of circumstances. Your efforts do not go unnoticed. We also extend our sincere thanks to the Marshall County Sheriff's Department, the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, TBI, the Giles County Sheriff's Department, and the Pulaski Police Department for their vital support and coordination in the apprehension of the individual responsible for this terrible act. Your collective efforts reflect the strength and unity of law enforcement agencies across our region, and the City of Lewisburg is grateful for each of you for your service. As President Ronald Reagan quoted, "Evil is powerless if the good are unafraid."
Send that to you. Give this appreciation. You know we all have lives on the line every day for us. This is all killing by appreciation.
We appreciate these guys, they did the work they do every day. Appreciate them.
Can we get the council, if y'all don't mind, to come in the picture?
All the council?
As however you can get. Vicky's back there, honey.
Okay, we good?
Yes.
Gina?
Whereas the mayor and council wishes to allow the citizens of the City of Lewisburg to voice their opinions, concerns, and comments, and et cetera, and whereas the City, Lewisburg, City Council holds a regular meeting the second Tuesday of each month. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Lewisburg that citizens will be allowed to address the council during citizens' input. Citizens addressing the council must abide by the following guidelines. Name and address be given for record. Give subject matter description. Understand there will be no voting. Three minutes minimum to speak. Address the council, not the audience. No personal attacks, no religious comments, no more than three minutes on the same subject. Once the meeting is adjourned, we ask that everyone exit the meeting room and the property in the timely manner.
Okay, does anyone wish to address the council? If you do, please come to the podium and state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica Limbird. I live at eight oh two Franklin Avenue. And I was here two months ago opposing the resolution to support the Columbia Dam, and I'm here again to do the same. General talking points, we've attempted this project before. It cost us eighty million dollars, and then it was demolished because of the threat it poses to the biodiversity of the river. The Duck River is the most biodiverse river in North America, and it's our responsibility to protect it. We recognize that without ample water, our communities cannot develop, and we know that growth is coming to Marshall County and surrounding areas. I'm not anti-growth, but I'm definitely pro-responsible growth, and encourage you all policymakers to find long-term solutions that consider the bigger picture and that are more sustainable. I encourage you not to be forced into making a singular decision or throwing your support behind a singular decision because it's been proposed. We know that nationally dams are being torn down. They're not being built up. And the dam project approved today would cost an estimated sixty million dollars, six hundred million dollars plus, though the true cost would probably be much higher. That is money that we pay in, and so as a taxpayer, I think that I have the right to oppose this project for lots of different reasons. What else do I want to say? I know that Governor Lee has appointed the Duck River Watershed Planning Partnership. They, it's, it's backed by money, and it's, it's, it's a membered partnership, and they have two years to determine the best possible path forward. So I encourage our city, this group, this council, to let that commission do its job before, again, throwing your support behind a singular path forward. I live in Ward Three. Many of the houses that are currently being developed in Marshall County are unaffordable, but myself and my neighbors. So I also just, as a member, as a resident and citizen of Ward Three, am concerned by the fact that development that this proposed project encourages is not available to, to my neighbors and myself. Yeah, so let's let, let's build a Lewisburg that our children's children can be proud of. I encourage you to vote no on the proposed resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Wilford Wensel. I live twelve sixteen long-distance road near Lewisburg. I am not a resident of the city. I just going to tag on to what this lady said right here. The ninety million that was squandered thirty-something years ago, ninety. The $90 million that was squandered 30 something years ago now has a value of $225 million. So we gonna start at $225 million, just throw it out there. We ain't got nothing else to do with $225 million, put up a dam. And once again, I'm gonna finish this part. If it was for the betterment, it's not. It's for developers. Y'all know that better than I do. They just gonna keep finding land to build on. I mean, just go over Spring Hill and look, and then they come over here. And like this lady said, they're not affordable house. I, I mean, for me, it wouldn't be. I'd hate to start over nowadays. I really would. And I wish you'd give it some consideration. Like she said, you got a committee overseeing this. You know, you don't have to make no rush, snap judgment decision tonight. But if it was for a good reason, it'd be different. You know, it just, and, and just think about them figures. We're gonna start again. If something we destroyed at $90 million, and that $90 million today is worth $225 million. And we gonna start right there. Who knows where we gonna end? For what? For water, for somebody that's gonna leave the state, the county? When they get through pillage, they gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Rick Williams. I live at 120 Winthorpe Place in Old Hickory, Tennessee. My day job, I work for Congressman Andy Ogles. I'm a field rep for him. I'm also a person that helped start this idea about December of '22 is when this first came about. It was an idea to rebuild the dam. And if I could, I'd like to pass this around. I've got a copy for each person. We've been all in the Duck River Water Basin, going to different county commission meetings, different city meetings. As of now, the counties of Lewis, Lincoln, Murray, and Marshall County, those county commissions have all passed the same resolution. Cities that have passed it are the City of Columbia, with complete support from Mayor Chaz Mulder, and the City of Chapel Hill's passed it. The Lewisburg Water Board has passed this resolution, as well as the Marshall County Water Board and the Murray County Water System Board has passed it. This is about getting water for this area and not for developers. It's about getting water, period. Unfortunately, when the dam was built 50 years ago, it was torn down later. It would be very helpful to have that dam right now. The economic impact of a dam and a lake here, I believe it's $200 something million that Tim's Ford is the economic impact around that dam. In total, the TVA system of dams and lakes, I think it's in the billions of dollars is how much economic impact is, is, takes place every year. So this is a bigger thing than just a dam. It's a, it's a moving part about economic growth for this area, not just developing and houses. I'm talking about just economic growth in general. We've got companies wanting to expand that can't expand because the water systems in Murray County will not let them, cannot guarantee them water. We have Chapel Hill that has 1,000 homes approved already. The zoning's ready to go. Everything's ready. They can't give them water taps. So one of the things Columbia Dam now has done, we went on record, and we sent it out to the press today. We wanna go on record to support raising Normandy Lake first. That's the quickest, fastest way to get more water in the river. Because we're about helping each county up and down the Duck River and each city get more water. That's the bottom line. So we wanna first support and urge, urge TVA and Governor Lee to let's, let's raise Normandy Lake while we're getting the dam approved. And as we all know, the dam was stopped by one man, a federal judge, about 50 years ago. It was one man's opinion. This would not be a good thing. It's sad that one man let this stop years ago. The land is still there, and it'd be good to have the dam. I'm sorry, Mayor, if I've gone over my time. Excuse me. And I'll be glad to take any questions if there, or if there are any there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll keep it short. I'm Dave Crouch. I live at 903 Lewisburg Pike in Franklin. Bought a farm on the Murray-Marshall County line six years ago. I didn't have the nerve to buy the Marshall County side of the farm. I just bought the Murray County side, but I'm, I'm one of your neighbors and spend a lot of money at the Mooresville store every week, it seemed like. Just wanna ask for your support on this resolution. I think the economic development aspects of this aren't just for developers. It's, I mean, spent a day on the lake with my son and some of his friends last weekend, and I ran the credit card twice for $75 per swipe and got 12 and a half gallons each time. And these boats burn a lot of gas. You would sell a lot of gas, receive a lot of sales tax from the commerce that a lake would produce. And just think it would be good for this whole area. Yeah, some of the property owners will benefit, but it's, it's just a great economic development engine for, for this whole area, and I think it'd be great for Lewisburg and Marshall County.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Okay. Did she come?
Yes.
Ronald, you wanna join me? Ronald, would you?
For two years now, Jessica Radley has provided outstanding leadership to a meaningful vision, celebrating Juneteenth. Juneteenth is the national day of reflection and celebration, recognizing a pivotal moment in American history. Jessica Radley, the founder of Juneteenth in Marshall County Sheriff's. I started Juneteenth in Marshall County to bring people together, celebrate our culture, and create something positive for the community. I hope it continues to grow and inspire others in the community to be involved. Juneteenth was proclaimed the federal holiday by President Biden and has become a major event for residents of Marshall County and neighboring areas where similar celebrations are held. For the second year, Jessica's leadership has been central to the success of these Biden events. Juneteenth 2025 expanded to include additional programming, secured over $5,000 in grant and sponsorship for local businesses and individuals, doubling the number of vendors from the previous year, and welcoming hundreds of attendance over the three-day celebration. Jessica Radley has deep family roots in Marshall County and spent her early years in Lewisburg to return on shoots when her daughter was four, seeking to raise her in a strong, supportive community close to the family. Jessica is also an active member of the Greater Baptist Church, and we have a plaque that we like to present on. The City of Lewisburg recognizes Jessica. The City of Lewisburg recognizes Jessica Radley for her vision of celebrating Juneteenth in Marshall County by creating positive involvement throughout the community, July 25, 2025.
Thank you very much for that. Gina?
Okay, we're on item three, approval of minutes for June 10th, June 18th, and June 30th, 2025.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counsel, Counselwoman Michael makes the motion. Counselwoman. Come on.
Thomas.
Thomas. Whoa, I'm sorry. Linda, two seconds. Is there discussion? Call roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Linda, I apologize. That was a brain.
No problem.
Item four, approval of June 2025 bills and May 31st, 2025 financial statement.
Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Counselwoman Thomas makes the motion. Is there a second? Is it Ronald?
Uh huh, Ronald.
Seconded by Ronald Robinson. Is there a discussion? Call roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number five, oh business, consider approval of Resolution 25-10, a resolution to support the TVA Columbia Dam Project on the Duck River. This resolution was deferred on May 13th, 2025 council meeting by council until July the 8th, 2025 council meeting.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Counselwoman Thomas makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Burns seconds that motion. Is there a discussion?
I kinda quickly read over this, but I don't believe this resolution has anything to do with changing the water level of Normandy Dam to help, correct? Okay, alright, just making sure.
Further discuss, discussion? Call roll, please.
Because he spoke of that.
Councilman.
We were still talking, Mr. Mayor. She was still talking.
No, I'm fine.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, he asked me why I asked that question, and I said, because Mr. Williams spoke of that. And so I was wondering why that wasn't in this resolution, that that was going to be their first effort.
Okay, further discussion. Call roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
No.
Councilman Michael.
No.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item six, new business, A, request for appointment of Luke Buckley to the, to the Development Development Board, which term expires June 1st, 2031, vacancy position due to the resignation of Eddie Wiles.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Burns makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselwoman Thomas seconds that motion. Is there a discussion? Call roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Six B, consider and approve of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 cost of living adjustment to be implemented effective June 30th, 2025.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with amended effective date of July in our present budget year, not going back to last year.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yeah, what, what are, you know, I don't understand. Is he changing this whole thing? So we gotta vote on his or this one?
You have to vote on this, and if it fails, then you gotta vote on what's presented on the...
So do we need a motion to approve it the way it's written here?
Well, is Mr. Huddle?
Six B?
I just made a motion to amend it.
Mr. Huddle, is...
Yes, I think the, probably first, you can either take up the motion to amend, or maybe more properly, there should have been a motion to approve it on the second, then once it's on the table, it can be amended and discussed. But I don't think a motion to amend...
So is the motion valid?
Necessarily out of order. It gets to the same place. You can vote on the motion to amend it, or, and then vote to... And if that passes, then it's done. If that motion to amend doesn't pass, then it goes back to the original motion and the original date.
Okay, restate the motion. Gina?
And I wanted you to restate that because that was, please restate your motion.
Yeah, motion to approve the cost of living adjustment with amended date of July, our current budget year, where we have it budgeted, and not go back to June the 30th, because we've already amended that budget. So they're getting the raise, same raise, it's just in July saving the taxpayers about $18,600.
Wouldn't they be losing money? They, they... They don't get their raise on the, on the...
They, they, they already got a raise up through June the 30th from last year.
Right.
So this is new. So they, June the 30th already included a raise from last year.
Well, it doesn't cost, I don't understand. What do you say it's gonna cost? What are you saying?
Mr. Owens?
Because we have normal payroll that's in that accrual, so it only costs the difference between normal payroll and the raise.
It's, it's still gonna take $18,600 out of a prior year fund balance.
But $18,000 is gonna come out anyway, because that's a normal accounting accrual for June's payroll.
If I could, and I apologize for not doing a very good job of explaining last time, but the issue is, there are two issues, really. There's normal accounting where we're gonna have to accrue one day, no matter what you all want to pay, and that's just normal, generally accepted acc...